All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the 9:30 AM agenda. It's Thursday, February 1st, 2024. Committee on Energy and Environmental Protection, we're in Conference Room 325. And first on our agenda this morning, we have House Bill 2098 relating to energy. So this is a wheeling bill, one of a few, which we reconsider every year and never seemed to go anywhere. But here we are again. And first up to testify, we have DCCA, Consumer Advocate.
Morning Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Cochran, members of the committee. My name is Mike Angelo. I am the Executive Director of the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, Division of Consumer Advocacy. We offer written comments on stand on our testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Public Utilities Commission?
Good morning, Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Cochran, members of the committee. My name is Colin Yost. I'm a PUC Commissioner. I'm here on behalf of the Hawaii Public Utilities Commission. We also stand on our written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Blue Planet Foundation.
Aloha Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Cochran, members of the committee. I'm Jody Robinson with Blue Planet, and will stand on our testimony in support. Thank you.
Ulupono Initiative? Thank you. Hawaii Solar Energy Association. In support, Hawaiian Electric.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is James Abraham. I'm testifying on behalf of Hawaiian Electric in opposition to House Bill 2098. We oppose this bill because we don't think that a mainland retail wheeling concept is a good fit for our isolated island grids. As noted in our written testimony, we have some strong equity concerns with applying this retail wheeling model and how that would impact our broader customer base. You know, Hawaiian Electric has gone through the PUC administrative process to establish some programs that have wheeling types of concepts and provide some of the benefits of wheeling, and take into consideration the realities that we face here in Hawaii. So we think that we should continue that process instead of imposing a mainland model. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm available for questions.
Next, we have KIUC in opposition, Hawaii Clean Power Alliance in support, Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party in support, Life of the Land with comments.
Aloha Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Cochran, and members of the committee. In my testimony, we trace the nearly 20-year history of wheeling here, from when the legislature first passed a resolution in support of having the PUC open a proceeding, and the PUC opened it. But then, as Hawaiian Electric pointed out, there have been limited applications in specific cases where it makes sense, but as a broad policy, it does not, and it doesn't stand up to equity issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Taheri Power in support.
Good morning, Chair Lowen. This is Sandy Wong. I'm on Zoom.
Go ahead.
May I proceed?
Yes, please.
So Taheri Power has submitted written testimony, which we will stand on. But I wanted to emphasize one thing for you and the committee. So Taheri Power is an independent power producer, which sells power to Hiko on Hawaii Island. Like most, like practically all independent power producers, they have a power purchase contract with Hiko. If there is excess power, which the Hiko will not take, basically, that power is wasted. So basically, Taheri produces clean renewable wind power. If it is not taken by Hiko because it's curtailed, basically, Taheri can't do that, use that power for anything else. It cannot provide it to a school, a government agency, et cetera. So that clean renewable energy is just wasted, which I think is a travesty. I'm available for comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we have Stan Osterman in support, and Keith Neal, individual in support. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members, any questions? Um, oh, go ahead. No, you first.
Okay, sorry. Hi. And Miko, Miko, oh, sorry, over there, wrong, wrong side of the room. Morning. And yeah, and thank you for your efforts. I'm from Maui, and in particular, Lahaina. But knowing the, as this testifier just explained, the curtailing of wind, I know that occurs on Maui also. And so that, what you do not use, wouldn't wheeling, you know, be able to assist, such as there's a whole new wastewater treatment plant that's slated to be built in Waikapu for Ma'alaia area. There's a whole entire town looking to be built by Mike Atherton. You know, that type of clean energy can be utilized there. Is that being discussed with your company at all?
Thank you for your question. I'm not familiar with that specific instance that you're talking about. But to address the curtailment issue, I will say that, you know, our, the design of our power purchase agreements moving forward are designed to kind of eliminate that concern. It's called the RDG PPA, which essentially provides developers with a standard payment regardless of, just for them being available, regardless of whether we actually accept power from them. So that's kind of our standard moving forward. So we hope that that eliminates a lot of the curtailment issues in the future. And I'm happy to get, give the committee more information on that afterwards.
Okay. Yeah. And thank you again for your efforts. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I guess the PUC. I was going to ask if you are aware how many years we'd been considering bills on wheeling, but Henry Curtis thankfully pointed out, it's been 20 years. And so we see the testimony year after year that says, oh, this would be more appropriately addressed in a PUC docket. And yet, the dockets remain open, and nothing's been resolved. And I understand the concerns about allowing wheeling in a way that you might, in states where you buy and sell electricity across state lines between different companies, which we don't typically do here. On the other hand, I think there are cases where it might make sense. And I think the purpose of this bill isn't to be prescriptive about how that should look, but just to get the PUC to do something that the legislature's been asking them to do for 20 years. So, comments?
Yes. Well, thank you, Chair Lowen. And the PUC does not oppose this bill. We just offered comments on it. And the really, the thrust of our comments is the timing that would, the time it would take to actually figure out these appropriate policies and procedures is just going to be a little more time than to the end of the year, which the bill, you know, requires.
Right. Because there's been 20 years.
That's, that's right. And so we appreciate the sentiment of the urgency and agree generally that, you know, we have to have kind of an all hands on deck approach to figuring out every possible avenue to bring more energy, especially low-cost renewable energy, onto the grid as quickly as possible. And so this could, in some ways, be another avenue to achieve that. But there's a huge difference, for example, in thinking about intra-governmental wheeling between two government agencies, and then a private developer.
Yes. I think we understand that.
Building something that you sell to customers.
But that would be still under, you know, up to the PUC to make decisions based on that.
Yes. It would just take a little longer, I think, than just till the end of 2024 to figure that out appropriately, and.
So would you, would a suggestion be to change the date to 2025?
Yeah, to give us time to do it, basically on the timeline that the bill includes for submitting a report to the legislature. We said in our testimony that we could not only give a report, but also a determination in that report as to what policies and procedures are appropriate. And so we, we wouldn't want to just belabor this endlessly. Like, we could look at it very seriously in a docket, allow all relevant stakeholders to participate, and then figure out the right solution.
And what is your, what is your take on the reason why this debate has been sort of languishing for 20 years?
Well, I think, as, as Henry mentioned, you know, initially, when the PUC did look at it comprehensively, a lot of issues came up and concerns. And there's a reason why utilities have to be public and regulated, generally, right? There's a lot of potential problems that can arise if it's a Wild West environment and totally deregulated, especially with electricity, which has a lot of safety concerns.
But it seems like there's this assumption that there's no shades of gray in between, like, we're saying either no wheeling whatsoever, or Wild West completely unregulated. And I think that's a really false, false framing of the issue.
Yeah, I agree. There's a middle ground that likely exists and is appropriate. And there are some dockets, as the Consumer Advocate pointed out, that address wheeling-type relationships, but those haven't moved forward very quickly either. And so I think looking at this comprehensively, as this bill suggests, would make more sense.
Okay. I mean, I've been here, this is my 12th session now, and the testimony every year is, oh, there's open dockets, and wait to see what happens with those. So I think we're tired of waiting.
Yeah, I agree. We shouldn't wait to see what happens in the microgrid docket and the other dockets that are open, like the green tariff. Those are small-picture solutions, and they haven't really even moved forward by themselves very quickly.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any other questions, members?
Yeah, sorry, I follow up. And so those dockets, I'm looking at your testimony, there's three numbered dockets. That's what you're referring to? And you're to have a report on all three by the end of 2025?
No, actually, the dockets, those numbered dockets, those are in the Consumer Advocate's testimony. I mean, well, we did, we did, we did address some as well in ours, but we're talking about suggesting that you require us to open a docket comprehensively on retail wheeling. And in that comprehensive new docket, we would look at all issues relating to retail wheeling, and then complete the work of that docket by the end of 2025.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Yep, thank you.
If no further questions, we'll move on. Next bill on the agenda is House Bill 1996. This is another bill related to wheeling that's more specific to hydrogen production. And first up to testify here, we have Division of Consumer Advocacy, DCCA.
Morning Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Cochran, and members of the committee. My name is Mike Angelo. I'm the Executive Director with the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, Division of Consumer Advocacy. We stand on our testimony providing written comments. Thank you. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you. And then, PUC?
We'll stand on our written testimony as well for this bill.
Thank you. Ulupono with comments? Thank you. HTDC in support?
Good morning Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Cochran. David Molinaro, representing HTDC. I'm the Director of HCAT. We stand in support of House Bill 1996. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaiian Electric in opposition?
Morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. James Abraham, on behalf of Hawaiian Electric, in opposition to House Bill 1996. You have our written testimony. I just wanted to emphasize one point, which is our significant concern we have with retail wheeling regarding the land constraints that we face in Hawaii, and in particular, on Oahu, for future renewable project siting. So we have, you know, limited land that is viable, and, you know, a good option for the siting of future renewable projects. And we have a 100% renewable goal by 2045. So we're going to need to be utilizing as much of this land as we can to meet this goal. And we have a concern that retail wheeling will allow, you know, private for-profit enterprises to utilize some of the best land for renewable projects and sell it to, you know, one large customer. And we think that it would be more opportune for these land resources that have, that are good renewable resources to be used for the broader customer base, and that the projects be bid into our renewable RFPs to allow the lowest cost for all customers. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. KIUC in opposition, and then Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party in opposition. Life of the Land with comments?
Aloha Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Cochran, and members of the committee. The testimony is largely similar to the previous testimony, but I want to add two thoughts. One, Hickam Air Force Base had a solar facility where they tested the idea at the site of using the solar to produce electricity, and when the, when electricity was not needed, they could throw a switch and produce hydrogen. That is possible at any renewable energy facility. So you can produce hydrogen at a renewable energy facility. The issue is whether you should wheel it to some other place. The second issue is that when the wheeling docket was opened at the PUC, it was not one intervenor or two intervenors, it was a slew of intervenors, and therefore, the proceeding will affect a lot of parties. And that's why you need more than just doing it this year. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have one individual offering comments. That's all the testimony we have listed. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not members, questions? Go ahead.
For Life of the Land? Thank you for being here and pointing to the Hickam Air Force Base utilization of hydrogen. Do you have a little bit more, you know, timeline on that? As I understand, they've been doing it for many years. It's not like just some brand-new type of techno, you know, energy source they've been utilizing. Do you have any background and more details on that?
No, I'm sorry, I don't.
That was just, okay, that's all good. I just thought you might have, but thank you.
I think it was, might have been connected to the spiders program, where Hickam and military bases have been looking at microgrids. And this was one of the techniques that they were using in considering microgrids.
All right. If no further questions, we'll move on to the next bill on the agenda. That is House Bill 1828 relating to the Energy Efficiency Portfolio Standards. First up, we have Hawaii, State of Hawaii Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission in support, and then DCCA in support. Standing on written testimony, Consumer Advocate? Sorry.
Stand on a written testimony supporting.
Thank you. Hawaii State Energy Office in support?
Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Cochran, members of the committee, Maria Tome for Mark Glick. We support this measure, and we will stand on our written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Utilities Commission in support? Thank you. Hawaii Energy?
Good morning Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Cochran, and members of the committee. My name is Caroline Carl, and I'm the Executive Director of the Hawaii Energy Program. We stand on our written testimony in support. stand on our written testimony in support, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Blue Planet Foundation in support?
Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Cochran, members of the committee. Jody Robinson with Blue Planet will stand on our testimony in strong support. Thank you.
Thank you. Ulapono Initiative in support?
Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaiian Electric?
Hawaiian Electric.
Thank you. 350 Hawaii in support. We have Democratic Party of Hawaii in support. Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party in support. Climate Protectors Hawaii in support, and two additional individuals in support. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? And if not, members' questions? All right. If not, we'll move on to the next bill on the agenda. House Bill 2798 relating to energy. This clarifies the definition of power generating facility for the purposes of environmental assessment to include new combustion electricity generating facilities. So basically, it's looking at applying EAs to any combustion facility, not just fossil fuels. And first up to testify, we have Attorney General with comments on Zoom. Oh, sorry. Come up, come up.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Allison Cato, Deputy Attorney General. We submitted written testimony just on one matter. The bill contains references to environmental impact assessments, which is not a term that exists under Chapter 343. So we recommend removing all instances of that term. And in our written testimony, we provided two ways that that can be accomplished. Thank you. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. And then we have the Hawaii State Energy Office with comments?
And then our written testimony with comments?
Thank you. Public Utilities Commission?
Also stand on our written testimony with comments?
Thanks. Hawaiian Electric?
Good morning Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Cochran, and members of the committee. My name is Grant Imomura. I'm the Director of Generation Project Development, and I'm here to represent Hawaiian Electric in opposition to certain provisions of House Bill 2798 as it relates to energy and in particular to changes to Chapter 343, the Hawaii Environmental Policy Act. Hawaiian Electric is aware and understands the importance of environmental protection, and we support it. In all the work products that we do, we follow the rules and regulations and laws. With regards to House Bill 2798, this addresses air pollution for combustion electricity power generation. There are already requirements in place to examine air pollution in Chapter 343, as well as air permitting requirements for emission, emitting facilities. Therefore, House Bill 2798 rule would change, would change to require environmental impact assessments and would be duplication of processes that are already in place. Therefore, it would be unnecessary. We also have concerns with the term one source of energy to another, and this is in reference to conversion. The term service, source of energy is, we believe, overly broad and ambiguous. If the term is in reference to fuel switching, so for example, switching from fossil fuels and converting to biofuel, in Chapter 343 and the required air permit will cover the assessment of emissions. Air permits are approved by the State of Hawaii Department of Health, as well as reviewed by the EPA for compliance with emissions, for emission compliance. Also, fuel switching to renewable fuels is anticipated for facilities in the future. We are going to do some of these processes in order to meet the state goal of the renewable portfolio standards by 2045. So we are concerned that this energy source conversion language will add time to the process, will result in additional expense to rate pairs, and would again be a redundant process to the processes that are already in place in Chapter 343, as well as air permitting requirements. In addition, under certain conditions such as natural disasters, or regulatory changes, or market changes, that could require fuel switches in the immediate term, this provision would delay necessary actions and possibly affect reliability. So we oppose this particular provision. Thank you, and I'll be available for questions.
Thank you. And then Hawaii Clean Power Alliance in opposition. Energy Justice Network in support. Mike Ewall on Zoom?
Yes, thank you Chair. So Mike Ewall with Energy Justice Network and also working with the Clean Power Task Force and Kokoua Naaina bringing these bills forward. This bill is not duplicative of existing policies that are already in place, as opponents are arguing. If it were, then why are environmental assessments already required for fossil fuel or fossil fuel or power plants? Are they duplicative, or does the law actually serve a purpose when it requires that for existing fossil fuel plants, or rather new ones? I would argue that the impacts of burning trash, burning trees, of biofuels are just as worthy, if not more worthy, of looking at the environmental implications, not just at the power plant itself, but at the whole life cycle, which is the point of doing an environmental assessment. We know that just the stack emissions from burning trash are 65% worse than coal for the climate, burning trees 50% worse, and burning biofuels are also worse for the climate than petroleum. And some of that, we have to look beyond just climate impacts and what's coming out of the smokestack, because you have issues with water, water depletion and soil depletion if you're growing biofuels on the islands, or with the shipping of them from the Midwest, if you're growing corn, or the impacts of ash disposal and just all the production systems that go in to, for example, cutting down trees to burn them for energy. These are things that even if an existing facility is switching to one of these fuels, those impacts need to be looked at because they weren't looked at when the environmental assessments for the fossil fuel plants were done in the first place. So this bill is just about equity and fairness in applying the same rules that fossil fuel power plants have to do to those that are burning things that could be differently bad or worse. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Climate Protectors Hawaii in support, Kokoua Naaina in support, and two individuals in support. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members' questions? All right. If not, we will move on to the next bill on the agenda relating to.
I have a testimony. Kokoua Naaina?
Oh, go ahead. Sorry, we missed you. Please go ahead. No. There we go.
Aloha. Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Cochran, and fellow committee members. Kokoua Naaina is a statewide nonprofit environmental organization formed in 2022 with the support of Mike Ewall at Energy Justice Network. We've been working closely with Hawaii Clean Power Task Force to bring you this legislation based on the history of similar policy work Mike has accomplished in local government. For 88 last year. Waste incineration is highly polluting and it's proved to be dirtier than coal, even after using expensive pollution controls. Monitoring is horribly inaccurate.
Yeah. We're, we're, you're freezing up and we're having a hard time. We can't hear you. Hello? All right. I think for now, we're going to move on noting the support of this organization. So, thank you. Technical difficulties. All right. We will move on to House Bill 2012 relating to electric vehicle parking. This removes the exemption that allowed owners of multiple parking facilities within the state to designate an electrified, fewer parking spaces than required. If they could, then they could aggregate them to one property. So that meant that certain properties weren't getting parking stalls. And then it also authorizes the counties to adopt ordinances to require additional parking, which we believe they maybe already have, but counties would like explicit authorization. And so first up to testify, we have the Hawaii State Energy Office in support.
Good morning Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Cochran, and members of the committee. Monique Shaefer for Mark Glick. We stand by, stand on our written testimony in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we have Retail Merchants on Zoom?
Aloha and good morning. I apologize. I'm having some technical difficulties. But we are in opposition. I'm Tina Yamaki with the Retail Merchants of Hawaii. Want to point out that we understand that there is an increase in electric vehicles in Hawaii, and the majority of them are on Oahu. And we believe that the market and customers should be the influencers in business trends and operation and not government mandates. Mandating EV stalls will not only be a cost burden to businesses, but will also increase the price of living in Hawaii. A lot of times, we get a CAM cost at the end of the year, especially if you're in like a shopping center, and that cost is going to be passed down to the customer. So your goods and services are going to go up. It is not that cheap to put in EV stalls or even increase them. You need to have engineering permits, asphalt, concrete, landscaping, and other utilities need to be, be removed and replaced. Sometimes, a new transformer is needed, because as we can see, we don't have static signs anymore. They're all electronic. Charging stations themselves can be extremely expensive. And this cost is going to be passed down to the retailer, I mean, and then on to the consumer. And we want to point out that on the neighbor islands, the need for charging station is less, as many EV vehicles have charging stations at their own home. What we're seeing on Oahu is because of the high cost of electricity, people are coming into our parking lots and charging their vehicles and not purchasing anything, and then going home. I live in Mililani. I see this often. It's the same few cars that are there. The people park the car, charge the car, go home across the street, and come back and pick it up. But they don't really shop in the stores every day. And we see that also too with UH students who don't want to burden their roommates with a higher cost of electricity. You know, government should be encouraging new businesses.
Tina, can you please summarize? We're, we have a lot of bills still to get through.
Yeah. So just want to say, government should encourage businesses to stand alone and have alternative energy charging facilities instead of mandating it on to businesses. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Hawaiian Electric, followed by NIAOP. So if anyone's here in person, just go ahead and line up so that we don't have to wait for everyone to stand up and walk to the mic.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Tereya Matcomber. I'm testifying on behalf of Hawaiian Electric Company in support of HB 2012. We support this bill because it does remove that exemption and allow for an increase in the number of charging stations, but even more importantly, an increase in the geographic distribution of charging stations, which is also really supportive to reduce that barrier for folks that live in condominiums and rent and aren't able to charge at home. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. And NIAOP Hawaii chapter, not present, I guess. And then Hawaii Electric Vehicle Association. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members' questions? Okay, we'll move on. Next on the agenda, we have House Bill 2103 relating to long duration clean energy storage. So this renames the renewable hydrogen program so that it includes hydrogen, but other types of energy storage, and then moves it to be directly under the Hawaii State Energy Office. First up to testify, we have Hawaii State Energy Office.
We stand on our testimony in support.
Thank you. And then we have three additional individuals, or two, two individuals with comments, one in support. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members, any questions? All right. If not, we'll move on. Next bill on the agenda, House Bill 2105 relating to renewable energy. This is funding for a statewide environmental assessment for Slim Hole Resource Characterization Program in partnership with UH. And first up to testify, we have the Hawaii State Energy Office.
We stand on our testimony in support. Thank you.
And Blue Planet Foundation, followed by Ulapono.
Chair, we stand on our testimony in support.
Thank you.
Chair, Ulapono will stand in his testimony in strong support. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Sustainable Energy Hawaii in support, and six individuals in support, one in opposition, and one with comments. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members' questions? If not, we will move on to House Bill 2390 relating to renewable energy. This just, this clarifies the requirements for greenhouse gas emission analysis, basically. So first up to testify, we have Consumer Advocate.
Chair, stand on our testimony in support.
And Hawaii State Energy Office, followed by Public Utilities Commission.
Chair, stand on our testimony in support.
Thank you. PUC?
Stand on our testimony in support.
Thank you. Hawaii Clean Power Alliance in support, and one individual in opposition. Is there anyone else here to testify?
I'm sorry. Aloha Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Cochran, and members of the committee. We can't name any zero emitting greenhouse gas producing facility. Even solar has operation and maintenance, which is non-zero. So this bill, I don't think applies to anyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, I apologize. We support you.
Oh, thank you. All right. That's all the testimony I have listed. Is there anyone else to testify? If not, members' questions? Okay, I think we'll move on. Next up, we have House Bill 2367. This is, again, an admin bill just clarifying the responsible party for the RPS. Support and reporting would be under the Hawaii State Energy Office. And first up to testify, we have Hawaii State Energy Office.
We stand on our testimony in strong support.
Thank you. And then DBET on Zoom?
Hi, good morning Chair. DBET stands on its testimony. Mahalo.
Thank you. DBET in support. And anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members' questions? If not, we will move on to House Bill 2767. So this is our second crack at the renewable fuel production tax credit. First up, we have Climate Commission in support. The Hawaii State Energy Office with comments. We have the Biotechnology Innovation Organization in support. We have NESTI in support. Is someone present?
Yes, we stand with our comments in support of this bill.
Thank you. Maui Chamber of Commerce with comments. Hawaiian Electric offering comments?
Yeah, good morning Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I'm Nicholas Paisley. I'm the Director of the Fuels Division at Hawaiian Electric, offering some, some comments on this bill. So in general, we're in support of a clean fuel initiative. The one thing that we're concerned about is the effect on electric rates. So the bill is written. It seems like it's kind of limited only to transportation. So in our written testimony, we offered some amendments, you know, so that it would include power generation. Again, the concern is that the rates will go up if we're excluded from these credits.
Okay.
That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry. You know what? I just realized I misread. We're on House Bill 2297. I think, I'm reading the right testifiers and everyone, everyone testifying knows what bill we're on, but now I'm catching up to everyone. So we're on House Bill 2297, and this is adopting a clean fuel standard. And we'll get to the tax credit bill next. So now I'm caught up with the rest of the room. Thank you. Next, we have IBW in support. And then Alliance for Automotive Innovation.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Tiffany Yajima here on behalf of the Alliance for Automotive Innovation. We stand in our written comments supporting the intent of this measure and note that we offered an amendment in our testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Clean Energy, Ryan Kenny in support. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members' questions? I guess I'm not sure who to ask. Maybe the Energy Office? I'll start with you. The bill just has blank amounts in it. I mean, it was introduced that way, I think, because we had questions. And so it's still to be determined in terms of how the Energy Office is directed to move forward on this, what percent, you know, below which year's levels, or which, below what level by what year. And do you have any recommendations? And do you have any recommendations for that?
Sure. I think our, the intent behind this bill, we were really looking at the carbon intensity standards, right? And it's important when we set those carbon intensity standards that they're not too strict to where there's no fuels that meet the standards. But they should also be, you know, strict enough so there, the fuels that are, you know, alternative to the fossil fuels are indeed cleaner than the fossil fuel alternative. That's at a minimum. With time, we really see the carbon intensity threshold coming down, so becoming more strict. And this is similar to how California, Washington, Oregon do their clean fuel standards. I don't think we have a carbon intensity threshold that we could give you today. I think it's also dependent on what's included in the scope of the fuels that are included.
I guess the question would be, the way the bill is written right now has those blank amounts, those blanks. We obviously can't pass it that way. Would you recommend, you know, can you either look at what you would put to fill in those blanks or would you recommend phrasing it differently? And could you give us a suggested amendment?
We can definitely provide suggested amendments. I think we would recommend some different phrasing there just to allow for really that sliding scale threshold.
Okay, any other? Thank you. Any other questions, members? Okay, if not, we'll move on. Thanks. Now we'll move on to the tax credit bill. House Bill 2767, so this is again updating the renewable fuel production tax credit to incentivize locally grown, produced, generated, or collected renewable fuel and extends the credit period from 10 to 20 years and increases the total aggregate cap. So first up to testify, we have Attorney General.
Good morning Chair, excuse me, Vice Chair and members of the committee. I'm Cynthia Johero for the Department of Taxation, I mean, the Department of Attorney General. We provided written comments regarding our concerns about this bill. They are similar to one that you heard on Tuesday. I think it was HB 227, 2296. Our concerns relate to the stated purpose of the bill that it incentivizes locally grown, produced, generated, or collected renewable fuel. To accomplish the purpose of the bill, it's giving taxpayers an additional credit value of a dollar per gallon for renewable fuels produced from the renewable feedstock, locally grown or recycled in the state. That phrasing, locally grown, is the phrasing that we are concerned about. We are concerned that it might be subject to challenge as violating the Commerce Clause because it favors local fuel producers over out-of-state ones. And therefore, our recommendation is to delete that phrasing and that this change would resolve our concerns. I am available for any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Department of Taxation.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Teresa Zetwick on behalf of the Department of Taxation. We do stand on our testimony, offering comments, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to read the list of names of people who are here to testify in person if you want to queue up so that we don't have to wait for everyone to get up and down. So we'll do Hawaii State Energy Office first, followed by Pono Pacific, then Par Hawaii, then Hawaiian Airlines, then Life of the Land, and then Pacific Biodiesel Technologies. So first up, Hawaii State Energy Office. Okay. Is no one else here? Pono Pacific? Okay, please come up. After Pono Pacific will be Par Hawaii if someone's here. For Par, please get ready to jump up. Thank you. And followed by Hawaiian Airlines. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Chair Loewen, Vice Chair Cochran, and members of the committee. My name is Chris Bennett and I'm here on behalf of Pono Pacific. Since 2000, Pono Pacific has grown to work with landowners in activating working lands and creating sustainable food systems. Given our experience, our partnership with Par Hawaii and Hawaiian Airlines envisions an economy where local agriculture, local production of renewable fuels, and local consumption come together. With respect to the AG's opinion that locally sourced renewable feedstocks violates the Commerce Clause, we respectfully disagree. Hawaii's biofuel tax credit aligns with the Biden Administration's goals for a clean energy transition and climate change mitigation. The SAF Grand Challenge is a government-wide initiative in the United States aimed at accelerating the production and use of SAF. Launched in 2021 by the Biden Administration, the initiative sets ambitious goals for increasing SAF production to 3 billion gallons per year by 2030 and 35 billion gallons by 2050. The pertinent legal question is whether promoting energy security through biofuels produced from locally grown, sustainable feedstocks is a legitimate public purpose. Unlike most states, Hawaii's geographic isolation significantly amplifies its vulnerability to price fluctuations and supply disruptions. This unique dependency on imported fossil fuels necessitates innovative solutions tailored to our specific context. The unique combination of Hawaii's energy vulnerability, limited renewable options, and the minimal impact of the tax credits on interstate commerce, coupled with its substantial local benefits and alignment with national goals, provides a compelling case for upholding its legality under the Commerce Clause. We stand by the rest of our written testimony and I'm happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Par Hawaii, followed by Hawaiian Airlines.
Okay, thank you Chair. Good morning Chair Loewen, Vice Chair Cochran, and members of the committee. My name is Eric Wright. I am President of Par Hawaii. We make fuel for Hawaii's airlines, the utilities, and the driving public here. We're in support of the bill. There's a great need for liquid renewable fuels in Hawaii and that's something that the recently issued carbon, decarbonization pathway study from the State Energy Office highlighted. We do have a couple of issues. One is, we don't think the bill does enough for jet fuel. Jet fuel is our biggest fuel need here in Hawaii. It's 40% of the market. And the way you get after carbon emissions there is sustainable aviation fuel. It's called SAF. SAF costs more to make. In Washington State, there's a credit of a dollar to $2 a gallon. Other states have done this, Minnesota and Illinois. So there needs to be something in the bill that deals with jet fuel. Otherwise, we're not going to have SAF here in Hawaii. Couple other issues I'd call your attention to. One is, the current law is a little bit ambiguous about whether the fuel needs to be made here in Hawaii. I think the purpose of the bill is to spur industry, spur jobs in Hawaii, so we suggest that that be clarified. And then lastly, there's an issue with the way the cap could be applied. It sort of sets up a first-come, first-served dynamic and we're a little bit concerned that that could be unfair to some of the smaller players. So that's it. Thanks so much for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next is Hawaiian Electric, please come up, followed by Life of the Land.
Hi, good morning Chair Loewen, Vice Chair Cochran, and members of the committee. My name is Alana James. I'm the Managing Director of Sustainability Initiatives at Hawaiian Airlines. And we will stand in our testimony, providing comments, but I just wanted to highlight that while we support the intent of House Bill 2767, our suggested amendments seek to provide incremental value for sustainable aviation fuel or SAF compared to renewable diesel in order to close the relative margin gap between the two. Without this, the producers will not have incentive to produce SAF, which runs the risk of aviation emissions not being addressed with this tax credit. Thank you.
Thank you. Life of the Land, followed by Pacific Biodiesel.
Good morning Chair Loewen and members of the committee. Olivia Chang with Life of the Land. I just wanted to highlight two things. First, a producer would still receive a tax credit for producing biofuels from imported feedstocks, for example, palm oil. So I think it's really important that we have safeguards. And I guess, second thing, if you like, take a step back and think about like, the goal is combating the climate crisis. Right now, the threshold is only that renewable fuels have to have emissions less than fossil fuels. I think it'd be important that fuels should achieve meaningful reductions. For example, the EU's standard is 80% for biofuels for producing power for heating and cooling starting in 2026. Thank you.
Thank you. Pacific Biodiesel.
Hello and thank you, Chair Loewen and Vice Chair Cochran and committee members. I'm James Forrest. I'm General Counsel for Pacific Biodiesel. There is a lot that, you know, overlaps with the bill that we had earlier this week. I do want to point out some good points from the Hawaii State Energy Office testimony for this bill. They agree that removing the 10-year period is important. We have changed that 10-year period to 20 years. And the logic behind that is that matches the deadline that's set for the renewables 100% standard of 2045. We do agree with them that it would be even better if you just removed that time period altogether. But either way, we obviously would be happy with those changes. The number two point is, they are looking at the amendments to the greenhouse gas analysis and we are totally fine with their changes. And, you know, they're the ones that are going to be implementing some of these and they're going to have to analyze that. So we can agree to those changes in their testimony. Now, they also are asking us, if you look at the bill, the way the current credit is, it relates to 20 cents per BTUs. That's pretty hard to understand for the common person. What that translates in our world is 40 cents a gallon for our liquid fuel. Okay? Now, we are okay if you try to have a consistent measurement because we have, the amendment has a dollar per gallon of fuel. They want to change that to some reference to BTUs. So if the equivalent still brings us up to somewhere close to the $2 range, and I understand that it could be $1 to $2, that's fine. But if you change the equivalent, please keep it at a dollar per BTU. That will keep us in that $1.50 range. And so those are the main differences. And that's, you know, part of the testimony from people here today in the industry, which is, we are ready to do this. We do need the assistance. And, you know, we can keep our production at the levels we are now, but we are trying to increase our production. If we're going to increase our production, and most importantly, what we produce is firm renewable energy, we need the incentives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we have the Biotechnology Innovation Organization with comments, Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments on Zoom, not present. Airlines for America with comments. Hawaii Forest Industry Association in support and Hawaii Farm Bureau in support. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members, questions? Okay, I think I had some questions. Okay, actually, no, I'll save, I'll save them. We'll move forward. So no other questions? We will move on to House Bill 2366. This repeals the Greenhouse Gas Sequestration Task Force. This is an admin bill. First up, we have Office of Planning and Sustainable Development in support.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members. It's with real mixed feelings that I ask you to support this bill. We started out with the Greenhouse Gas Sequestration Task Force in 2018 with very high hopes that we would be able to accomplish the very ambitious mission in that statute 225P4. However, after initial appropriation, we were unable to get additional funding for it. These, the tasks the legislature set us were research tasks that go back, they're at the early end of the pipeline of whether we can sequester greenhouse gases through better practices in farming, in types of soils that we utilize for farming, aquaculture, and in urban forestry. But unfortunately, without support, this is a very large task force and without a position to manage that and comply with Sunshine, we're unable to move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have D-Bet in support on Zoom.
Hi, good morning Chair. D-Bet stands in on his testimony in support.
Thank you. Any questions, members? That's all the testimony we have. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members, questions? All right, if not, we'll move on to the last bill on the agenda. This is House Bill 2123 relating to air pollution. This requires Department of Health to conduct continuous air quality testing for certain chemicals at waste management facilities. And first up to testify, we have Department of Health. Thank you. So Department of Health standing on written testimony for everyone watching. Then Energy Justice Network, Mike Ewell on Zoom.
Thank you Chair. So having reviewed the Department of Health's comments, not just the ones from a few months ago, but the ones right now.
You know, we really just testify on your testimony, not on other people's submissions. So, and we did get your lengthy written testimony. So please just give us the highlights.
Yes.
Thanks.
So the point that they brought up is that there are 235 facilities that will be covered by this bill. This bill is based on a bill that we wrote that's introduced separately, as in my comments, that has a lot more protections and is a lot more narrowly crafted so that it only currently would apply to the H Power trash incinerator. Currently, this bill, 2123, would apply to apparently over 200 different facilities, including composting and recycling facilities. That was never the intent of this bill. This is based on a bill that I helped write that is passed in the state of Oregon that only in that state regulates one trash incinerator and requires that they use modern continuous testing technology for the toxic pollutants and other pollutants coming out of the smokestack. We would like to see this bill amended to look like the original bill that it should have been, so that it's not trying to regulate 200 additional facilities, but narrowly looks at the ones that need it the most and the ones that might come in the future trying to burn waste anywhere in the state to make sure that we have real-time information on a public website that is constantly available for the public to know what's being put into their air. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And next, we have Lahaina Strong in support. Chamber of Sustainable Commerce in support. Climate Protectors Hawaii in support. Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party in support. Kukua Na'aina, this says in person, but I think on Zoom. Is that Lisa Howlett?
Aloha. Aloha Chair. Aloha Vice Chair Cochran and fellow community members and committee members. My name is Lisa Howlett. I'm a founding member of Kukua Na'aina. I'll jump in. At, waste incineration is highly polluting and has proved to be dirtier than coal even after using extensive pollution controls. Monitoring is horribly inadequate as many pollutants go totally untested and most others are tested just once a year under ideal operating conditions. This seriously underestimates certain emissions that can harm our health. With regard to the H Power trash and sinner on Oahu, Department of Health makes the argument that the pollution goes, mostly blows out to sea, as if that means we shouldn't care about the emissions. However, they confirm that the emissions blow towards Oahu residents about 13% of the time, nearly one full day out of every week. The amount of emissions reaching people is quite significant and we don't know how significant because the testing is incomplete. Also, many eat seafood while certain, where certain toxic emissions blowing out to sea can concentrate in fish such as mercury, PCBs, and dioxins. Currently, this bill does not have all the proper language it needs to be effective. HB 2796 has all of the language that this bill ought to have and we strongly recommend amending that language into this bill before reporting it out of committee. Mahalo for hearing my testimony and thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Greenpeace Hawaii, Dave Mullinix, in support on Zoom.
Yes, good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for all your hard efforts and work to protect our environment and climate. I really appreciate all the work you folks are doing. We stand by our testimony and, but with amendments, we suggest that you look at those amendments. We're concerned that we need to add in five major pollutants, carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, nitrogen oxide, sulfur dioxide. carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, nitrogen oxide, sulfur dioxide, and particulate matter. But overall, it's a good idea. We like the intent, but we need to strengthen it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party, Melody Aduha, on Zoom. Melody, are you there?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I am, sorry about that.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, aloha. Aloha, Chair Loan, Vice Chair Cochran, and members of the committee. My name is Melody Aduha. I am co-chair of the Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii, and I rise in support of HB2123. However, this bill should be, should require continuous monitoring or continuous sample system. Continuous monitoring involves installing equipment in the smokestacks and leaving it in place to provide complete reporting on what is actually being emitted into the air and carried by wind. Continuous sampling should be used for the most toxic chemicals known to science, and that's dioxins, furans, PCBs, PFAS, and PAHs. This method includes sample collection by cartridge for four to six weeks. The cartridge is then sent to a lab for results. Currently, we have no information on how much dioxins, furans, PCBs, PFAS, and PAHs are emitted into the air we breathe. The five major pollutants continue to be subject to continuous, or should be, must be continued to subject to continuous monitoring. These pollutants are CO2, CO, SO2, NOx, and particulate matter. While H-Power is continuously monitoring four out of these five pollutants, this may not be the case for smaller, newer facilities. These major pollutants must be included in the bill. H-Power does not continuously monitor particulate matter. This bill should require this. And we need immediate data disclosure and enforcement requirements. This data can be posted online, just as Covanta, the operator of H-Power, does at their other incinerators countrywide. We need an enforcement mechanism. The DOH must be empowered to enforce these health-related clean air standards when an exceedance of air pollution is determined, creating an adverse effect on human health and the environment. Thank you very much for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you. And then we additionally have testimony from 22 individuals in support and three with comments. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members, any questions?
Ruta Jordans.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead, Corey.
Did you say Corey or Ruta?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. My bad. Please go ahead, I'm sorry that we missed you. Just state your name and organization.
Okay, I'm Ruta Jordans from Zero Waste Kauai, and I'm in support of HB2123. As a resident of Kauai, where we have a biomass burning facility, I am very pleased to see this bill, but I'm also hopeful that you will amend it in the following ways that have just been listed by the other speakers. I would also add that the cost of the testing should be paid by fees on the incinerators, not by the State Department of Health and taxpayers. It's their bad when they're putting it out, so they should be paying for it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, did we miss anyone else? Is there anyone else here to testify? In person or on Zoom? If not, Chair Gate.
Thank you, Chair. DOH? DOH here? Thank you for being here. So looking at the testimony, DOH is the only opposition, overwhelming support. So I think there's definitely a need to increase the discussions regarding air pollutions in Hawaii. DOH stated that it doesn't perceive a need for it right now. Is there any way you can elaborate on that?
So we typically rely on or defer to EPA. EPA does comprehensive reviews of federal regulations periodically for, say, municipal waste combusters, it's every five years. They just recently did a complete extensive review, and it's out for a comment right now where they're decreasing emissions limits, and it'll likely require additional air pollution controls. So, you know, in EPA's review, they must consider, you know, the latest control technologies, the latest practices, procedures and processes to determine if the limits, if monitoring and other requirements are protective of public health with a margin of safety. We also have NCOR Data, which is a national core monitoring station that is located between Campbell Industrial Park and the Kapalee Community, and that measures for eight of the 18 pollutants on this list. And all of those eight pollutants show that, you know, it's not endangering public health. So at this time, we feel like those are our concerns.
Thank you. And it says that you guys currently are monitoring 36 sites, is that correct? It says you have 30... Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, we do have permits for, you know, several of these facilities, and they do require monitoring and other requirements to regulate them.
Okay. And in regards to the solid waste sites, does this include private sites as well? Is there public and private?
The landfills?
Landfills, yeah.
It would, our permitting would depend on emissions and size. So it doesn't matter if it's public or private, it would just be based on emissions.
I'm trying to get to how you guys are determining where to monitor in terms of these sites.
Again, that would go back to EPA regulations, federal regulations, that again, provide requirements for permitting and monitoring and testing for these various sites.
And then where does the state and federal regulations intersect? And how do you work in collaboration in that?
You know, we would, we definitely would follow all of EPA's requirements. We are required to follow all of EPA's requirements. So, you know, we couldn't have anything that conflicts with EPA requirements. So that's, and we would impose all of those requirements.
I definitely think EPA is bare minimum. I think there's things that we can do to increase our testing for local residents here. For example, we have an issue with, in my district, Pukai Bay, I know this might be a little different, but the water testing for our beaches. A lot of people getting staph infections, so forth. DOH can't give us an answer why it's happening because they only test for E. coli. But there's all these other bacteria that exist out there that we're not even giving it a chance to look into. So my hopes with this is that we can broaden our horizons with how we test for safety in regards to residents' health. And this kind of goes into that too, because in, right outside of my district, we have the PVT landfill, which is a private landfill. According to census data, people that live in a one to two-mile radius of that area have a 10-year less life expectancy. So trying to figure out how do we make sure that we are catching this before EPA changes its regulations is what I'm aiming to do with this bill. And I hope that DOH can kind of work with us to see what additional things we can do rather than just writing it off and saying we're covered by EPA.
We're definitely willing to work with you.
And then in regards to the types of funding and personnel you guys would need, because I know that was mentioned in your testimony, that is one of the reasons you guys oppose it. Is there any estimate to what that looks like?
First, you know, something this big, we don't have an estimate. We did compare it to costs that we are incurring for monitoring in Lahaina right now. And it is extremely expensive, you know, to do these types of air sampling and air monitoring. And it is in our testimony. It might not be a one-to-one comparison because it's different pollutants, a different lab analysis. But it would be extremely expensive to perform all of this monitoring.
I'm just thinking that with the recent Red Hill situation, we've allocated funding for a state laboratory to be able to expand our testing capacity. Is that something that you guys can tag on, tag along with, and try to increase that there?
Right now, you know, we would have to send our analysis to mainland laboratories. I don't, I don't know if the state laboratories, you know, what they're doing with the money or mention. But right now, the analysis would have to be sent to the mainland laboratories.
Chair, one last question. I think one of the things that I would hope for is that we can be, we can improve our transparency in terms of testing and stuff like that. So is there a public dashboard that people can go to to identify where they live, maybe the nearest testing site nearby to be able to be informed?
Well, we have an ambient air monitoring network. You know, it has the criteria pollutants. And there is a website that people can go on to look at that. It's statewide network. So we do have that, and that's available to the public.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Couple quick questions for you. Just out of curiosity, and this might be a stupid question. I mean, the primary emissions from a landfill are methane, which we know is a potent greenhouse gas. But in terms of air pollution impacts to human health, I mean, does it, does methane, do methane emissions have much impact on that? Or do they rise up into the atmosphere relatively quickly?
Yeah, sorry, I don't have a really good answer for that. But like, you know, landfills of a certain size, they would have a gas collection system, right? And then they would be required to have some kind of air pollution control, like a flare or something, yeah. So, and they would be required to monitor methane at the surface.
Okay, can you find out? I'm just curious to answer that question. And then we're kind of looking at the other bill that was mentioned that I think is a little more narrowly crafted towards waste combustion facilities, so it wouldn't sweep in like composting and, you know, all the smaller things necessarily. That one, I think, also puts more of the onus for the testing and monitoring on the facility rather than on Department of Health. But the enforcement would still fall to Department of Health. So if we adopt more of the language in that other bill, which is 27... All right, I have it. House Bill 2796. Would, how would, like, would DOH still need additional resources to, you know, accommodate that language?
Yeah, I did look at that bill. I don't know if I have it all remembered in my mind, but I believe it did require, you know, we would have to do enforcement, and I think there was a website or a dashboard, and so it would require additional resources.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think in that bill, the posting the data fell to the facility as well. But it would be enforcement.
Right, right.
But also, yeah, I mean, I think that question of enforcement is always a question with everything we pass, but it doesn't mean, in my view, that we shouldn't still pass good measures.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we would have to, you know, review the data and, of course, check on all the requirements are being met and compliance.
Okay, all right, thanks. Any other questions, members?
Thanks. So I see a lot of testimony coming from Lahaina in particular. And I'm not sure, because of that temporary debris site in Olualu, how would this, because I know you mentioned briefly about air monitoring, which has been occurring, so thank you for that. So, yeah, how would, because I don't think that terminology is in this, but will it still, you know, be able to, I guess, oversee that type of potential effects on the community and environment?
So, yeah, we have been doing some monitoring, or a lot of monitoring actually, in Lahaina, and we've also deployed in Olualu particulate monitors. You know, I did see another measure that talked about air monitoring and long-term monitoring, in particular for the Maui wildfires. So, you know, we will be testifying on that bill and supporting it, and, you know, of course, including Olualu.
Okay, and so is this, does any, not just air, but land and sea type of monitoring occur under your folks', you know, division or scope of monitoring?
Like, you're talking about water monitoring or?
Yeah, oceans, groundwater, I mean, would that be?
Questions relevant to the bill that we're considering?
Sorry, we just air.
Yeah, okay.
Any further questions, members? All right, if not, we will recess for decision-making.